Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham. Oh, sorry. Eight to one.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, July ninth, 2012, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations. July is Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you, Suzette.
And that is my only announcement, except, again, congratulations to Jonathan Webb. City Manager, do you have public announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We had planned to make a presentation this evening from the Government Finance Officers Association. We're going to hold that for a future meeting. The only other announcement is to remind the members of the community that this Saturday, July the fourteenth, is our Public Works Recycling Day and Equipment Expo out at Evanston Township High School on Saturday morning. So if people have items to be shredded, papers to be shredded, if they have computers or video games or televisions or any kind of large electronics, this is our one time of year where residents can come and drop those materials off free of charge. There'll be a drive-through drop-off at Evanston Township High School. Suzette Robinson, our Public Works Director, is here, and perhaps she can say a little bit more about this. I believe we start, Suzette, we start at nine o'clock, ten o'clock? Nine o'clock on the fourteenth? And Suzette, maybe could you talk a little bit about the items that will be recycled as well as the other activities people will find at the fair this year?
Stuart, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and City Clerk, and City Manager. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. As the City Manager mentioned, the recycling fair will be at Evanston Township High School from nine a.m. till noon. You can enter off of Lake Street, coming in at Dodge, and then coming into the high school in the parking lot behind the high school. There were, in addition to shredding, we're accepting batteries, TFLs. We're also accepting novels, which we will recycle and give to the military. And we are also going to have an equipment exposition. There will be, in addition to public works, construction equipment, also construction equipment from our contractor group, CNG, natural gas refuse truck. We will also have, the fire department and the police department will be there registering bicycles. We're also having a, we're accepting bicycles to be recycled as well for the mayor's team biking program that will be kicking off later this fall. And I think that pretty much covers everything.
Great.
Oh, and then we'll have free cotton candy and popcorn.
Alderman Grover has a question.
Now it covers it all.
Director Robinson, and electronics, too. Am I correct?
Oh, yes, yes, electronics and document shredding. So please stay with your vehicle. We will unload everything from your vehicles. And you can sign up for the composting containers, the repurposed garbage carts. We'll have two hundred and fifty of those for signup, and we'll deliver those to you after the fair.
Thank you.
That concludes my announcements, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
There's no communications for you this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment. Citizen comment is an important part of council meetings. We welcome comments from all citizens, and we encourage the expression of different opinions and viewpoints. Comments from concerned citizens are another reason that makes the city of Evanston a remarkable place to live. The city's Board of Ethics concluded its independent investigation and determined that there was no conflict of interest regarding the Kendall matter pursuant to Council Rule six point four. That matter is concluded and is beyond the jurisdiction of the council. All further redundant comments made on this subject made by any speaker will be ruled out of order. No further redundant and duplicative comment, such comment which has gone on for over sixteen months, will be heard on the Kendall matter at this or any other council meeting. This ruling is in accordance with the council rules, the holding of the U.S. Supreme Court in Perry Education Association versus Perry Local Educators Association, and Section two oh six G of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. I will call the names of the first four speakers. Please come up, and you each have three minutes. Give your name and address. Mr. Mitchell Harrison has asked if he could please be first. I don't know the reason, but I'm going to honor that request. So Mr. Harrison, Mr. Rizki, Linda Cooper, and Lynn Simon are the first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it. I'm speaking in, my name's Mitchell Harrison. I live at fifteen nineteen Judson and have for thirty years. Speaking about my concerns about the ordinance before you about the bed and breakfast. My personal concerns, I might add, which some of the people I've spoke to believe some of the things that I believe also. But anyhow, some of these big homes that have become available, or one in particular that has become available, I understand that not too many people can afford to buy these homes today, that loans are hard to come by, and when they do, not many people can afford, after buying them, to pour a lot of money into them and fix them up, as one of my neighbors has done around the corner, done an outstanding job. That said, we wish to be cautious, and I wish that you would be cautious, about how many of these bed and breakfasts are allowed and how close together they're to be. I see a lot of bad things that could come from it. Personally, I think the value of our homes could go down. I think that you want to have a distance. I know you've been discussing five hundred feet, seven hundred and fifty feet, a thousand feet. My belief is, is if you're going to allow more than one in our ward, for example, which is the first ward, certainly should be at least seven hundred and fifty feet apart. I'm concerned about special events. I'm concerned about parking. I'm concerned about noise. And I don't really think it fits. I mean, I think there's other parts of town that would be nice to have bed and breakfast, too. You know, there's a great home for sale on Sheridan, down by, I believe it's Greenleaf or something? Lakefront views, lovely home. I don't think they all belong necessarily in the historic first war district of where I live. It sounds snooty, maybe. It sounds snobbish, but it's a beautiful area, and once certain things are taken away from it and lost, they're not going to come back. I realize that a gentleman that fixed up the house and had bought the Doyle House has a considerable amount of money, and that's great. I hope he does a great job with it. But I think my one comment would be, if we're going to allow more than one of these or two of these in each neighborhood, let's at least have them seven hundred and fifty feet apart. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you.
Janette Rizki, I'll discuss a few items tonight. First item, in AP&amp;W, there was a discussion of this building on Oakton for sale. To me, this is another waste of taxpayer money, again, to have one dollar rent for a building. I think some of the aldermen did sum this up quite well. This is the same problem we have at the Arts Center where the city neglected it. By the way, if the roof isn't the square footage you say, it'll be three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars to replace it. So we're charging a dollar rent, we can replace it in four hundred thousand years. It's a joke. Item two, roadmap to the arts, another waste of taxpayer money. Twenty-five thousand dollars out of Wally's slush fund, basically, the city manager's discretionary fund. More wasting money. Absolutely not necessary. Council members need to start asking fish who are responsible and not spend money on studies that do nothing and don't fix the buildings. Item three, eight point six. I understand we have another financial report. I would like to ask one question. Why aren't these auditors signing the report? Why isn't anyone from the firm responsible to sign the report, actually put their name to the document, not sign the name of the firm and initial it? Maybe there's some concern as to what the financial position of the city is. Item four, motor control center. Did we get the insurance check, and how much additional money are we spending? As you know, I talked about the issue of the three million dollars we transfer out of the water fund, and basically, water mains have been breaking on the north side of town. And I hope it's not, you think, because of the heat. Frankly, they're breaking because they're stressed and they're old. The city has taken over thirty million dollars in the last ten years out of the water fund that could have fixed these. It's frankly a real problem. And finally, a council member tonight says the budget is about, the budget's about to start. If council members are responsible, wasting money on some of these things, when a council member stated employees will be laid off, possibly made homeless, it's time some of you start to be a little more responsible to the employees here. And I'll leave one other comment. A year and a half ago, the city failed to collect rent on a building behind the civic center. I'd like to know, as the city started to collect rent on Howard Street for the units they're renting down there, who in the city is going to be held responsible to collect the rent? I'd like to know the employee, and I hope Wally doesn't say it's me, but somebody's going to be responsible to make sure when, if they stop paying rent, that they'll be evicted and taken out of the building. So I'd like to see, the city should not be managing this real estate. Should professional companies do it? Staff seems uncapable, and we continue to waste money. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Simon and Linda Cooper.
Hello. I'm Lynn Simon, and I live at four oh four Church Street. My husband and I, George, who can't be here tonight, but he's here in spirit, and I'm here to talk, to give you my thoughts about the B&amp;B ordinance. I live in this neighborhood. It's a very, it's a wonderful neighborhood, very close to the main part of downtown Evanston, and it's a very fragile residential neighborhood for that reason. And if we have a B&amp;B or more than one in that neighborhood, it's going to destroy the character, the residential nature of the neighborhood. I'm really in support of as big a distance requirement as you see fit, seven hundred and fifty to a thousand. I'm concerned about the noise. I really would want you to put in the ordinance that special events could only happen very, very rarely, and that parking would not be an issue, that they would have to manage the parking in some way that didn't affect the parking in the neighborhood. What else is there? I'm forgetting a point.
We're together. Yes. I'm Linda Cooper. I live, I own a condo at four twenty Church Street. And as a comment, it's interesting that Mr. Pritzker chose to live in this community, and he must have liked the community as it was, as we've talked about what it is. And his neighborliness is another thing. I support all of the aspects that have come across that are suggested tonight, especially the event once a quarter. I think that's extremely important. I'm worried about the, you know, I understand the parking's been taken care of, but you know, with an event like that or guests, there's going to be all kinds of double parking on the street as they drop people off, and vendors come and all that kind of stuff. I want to know how that's going to work. But what I'm really interested in is, in the ordinance, there's the request that the owner owned fifty percent or more of the property, but also that it be owner occupied. Well, if it's, if the property is in an LLC, how is that going to work? Because if the, if the actual owner is in the property, they're accountable, and at least you can, you know, go to them and talk to them. One of his LLCs is in Los Angeles. I mean, it just fogs the whole kind of owner. Who's the owner? Where is it? That kind of thing. So I don't know, I think it's a very good idea to have a person living in the building who is accountable, the LLC.
And I would agree that that's really important.
Just to raise that. So I think we did it.
I think we did. We covered it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next are David Reynolds, Elaine Purnell, and Robert Egee, three two four Davis. My apologies for massacring your name.
My name is David Reynolds. I live at two oh four Davis Street. I have some prepared remarks that I would like to read. A B&amp;B in a residential neighborhood will have an effect on its neighbors and its neighborhood. In my view, the effect will not be positive. Try to imagine what benefit a B&amp;B could bestow on its neighbors or neighborhood. Many have said that a B&amp;B will reduce or will rescue a grand old house in decline. If you look at the few grand old houses in the Lake Shore Historic District that have gone into decline in the past decade, each, with the exception of three hundred Church Street, has been bought by a family who has invested heavily in repairs or restoration. Parenthetically, had three hundred Church Street been priced at market, it too would likely have gone to a family. That will continue to happen. We do not need B&amp;Bs to rescue houses. As a single B&amp;B will not provide a benefit to a neighborhood, allowing B&amp;Bs to congregate in any particular area will prove detrimental to their neighbors. Not only will there be no positive effect, there will be a deleterious effect on surrounding property, values, and quality of life. The only way to prevent congregating is to require a minimum distance between B&amp;Bs. In Madison, Wisconsin, a community similar to ours in many respects, the minimum separation distance is a thousand feet in single-family neighborhoods. Our community has settled on nine hundred-foot separation between group homes, and as B&amp;Bs pose some of the same issues as group homes, I believe is it appropriate that B&amp;Bs also have a minimum separation of nine hundred feet? In thinking about B&amp;Bs in the context of the zoning ordinance, please consider this. A B&amp;B is, in many respects, a home occupation. Like other home occupations, it is regulated because it can have a deleterious effect on a residential area. Many communities, including Oak Park, in fact, regulate B&amp;Bs under the Home Occupation section of their zoning ordinance. Because a home business can potentially impact a neighborhood, Evanston has chosen fairly strict requirements for them. Major home occupations in Evanston, which require approval by the zoning administrator, are limited in the following ways. No clients between nine p.m. and seven a.m. The area of the home used for business purposes cannot exceed twenty-five percent of the total area. A maximum of two non-resident employees. A maximum of six clients at one time. And a maximum of three deliveries per week. These restrictions are in place to protect the residential character of the areas surrounding them. As you can see, a B&amp;B would have difficulty complying with almost all of the home business limitations. A B&amp;B has the potential to disrupt any neighborhood in which it exists while contributing little, if anything, to the economic health of the community. Tax revenue will be minuscule. I hope you will pass the ordinance, as it came out of committee, with the exception of increasing the separation distance to nine hundred feet in order to protect neighbors and neighborhoods from commercialization. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Elaine Purnell. I live at thirteen twenty-four Forest Avenue, and I'm a native of Evanston. I was born in St. Francis Hospital. I went to Oakton School, Nichols Junior High School, Evanston Township High School, and did my undergraduate work at Northwestern University. So I've lived in this town for a long time. I've also lived in Womet. I've lived in Huntington Beach, California, and I've lived in New York City. But my family and I have chosen to come back to Evanston because it is such a special place to live. It's because of the diversity of the city that it has always meant so much to me and the place that I wanted to raise my daughter. I'm here because I am very opposed to the things that we have just been hearing about with regard to the B&amp;Bs in Evanston. I agree that it will change the fabric and the nature of our neighborhoods. I agree that it is a business and it should be run and operated by the things that the person who spoke before me had mentioned. So I hope very much that you'll listen to the people who have spoken before me, and those will come after, and keep Evanston as special as it has been all the years that I have lived here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Egley, spelled Egley.
Sorry about that.
The problem was that the city's ballpoint pen had come to the end of its flow of ink. I do think that the economic aspects of the situation being discussed would provide little more than the cost of a new ballpoint pen for the city. I have lived in Evanston since nineteen ninety-four. My wife had, at that time, joined the faculty at Northwestern. We walk to her office from three twenty-four Davis Street on a regular weekday basis and are quite familiar with this particular area stretching from Davis all the way to the campus and back. The benefits that the extension, the benefits that would come from a bed and breakfast arrangement have typically accrued only to the mom and pop establishments. It was, and I think still is, a means of providing supplementary income to mom and pop to keep them in place and support their lifestyle, if you will, while they are still able to meet the needs of the occasional visitor. This particular situation doesn't meet the characteristics of the mom and pop bed and breakfast. It does not meet the characteristics or the specific, specific need of supplementary income to the resident at a particular home. It doesn't meet, moreover, the needs of the residential market for homes in our particular community or particular neighborhood. The, what it does promise or does threaten is a commercialization of a very thin line of residential homes, from Judson to Forest, one very short block with perhaps four houses at the most on one side, a very small distance. It makes one question whether this commercialization would extend the high-rise developments sometime in the future. The grounds for that being that the bed and breakfast, if densely located, would extend in that narrow one block width, east to west, between the park and the rather extensive Mather establishment.
I do need you to wrap up.
All right.
Thank you.
Let me ask, in terms of the obvious financial aspects and financial means of the main advocate for this proposal, whether the members of the city council have had opportunity to be, speak, opportunity to speak either with Mr. Pritzker or his direct designate? So I wonder how many of you, in the course of this?
We don't usually respond during public comments. I'd be happy to tell you later.
All right. Thank you.
At least about myself. That concludes public comments on agenda items, on non-agenda items. There are three speakers, Padma Rao, BK Rao, and Bonnie Wilson. Carolyn DeLuttre, it looks as if your name is crossed off. No, all right, well, then you're the last. I'm sorry.
Padma Rao, two two four six Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. The world owes gratitude to those who demand equality and a chance for all to be heard, including people like Mahatma Gandhi, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Nelson Mandela, and Aung San Suu Kyi. These champions of democracy set standards that every government should follow. But this council and its mayor choose instead to follow the worn-out path of those who oppress people and try to silence ideas. I submit that such a strategy did not work well for Saddam Hussein and Muammar Gaddafi and has no place in Evanston. Webster's Dictionary defines hypocrisy as, quote, "a deception as to real character and feelings," end quote. Your mayor made claims that all speakers are welcome even when their views differ from yours. But your mayor's actions categorically contradict such claims. Your mayor repeatedly attacks us and encourages your members and staff to do so, even when we discuss other topics. Your mayor repeatedly turns off the microphone when we speak. I submit that your mayor's actions make her claims hypocrisy within the dictionary's plain meaning. Your mayor forbids taxpayers from speaking on a matter of public concern based on her misinterpretation of the term jurisdiction. I submit that this council could never be mistaken for a court, and so the proper definition of jurisdiction is the one applicable to government, which is, quote, "a government's general power to exercise authority over all persons and things within its territory," end quote. This council exercised authority in the matter and continues to do so. I urge the public to read the Preservation Commission's agenda for June nineteenth, page one, Part Six, Section A. One of this council's members appeared before the commission and stated that some of the legally affected property owners, as well as the general public, were excluded from a meeting arranged with the applicant by said member. I further urge the public to take notice of today's council agenda items P four and O one regarding amendments of previous council decisions. I submit that when this council can amend its previous decisions regarding ordinances or other matters of public policy, then it is impossible to claim a lack of jurisdiction. We're allowed to speak for no more than three minutes. I submit that it is a gross violation of our constitutional rights to turn off the microphone when my mother and I speak on issues of importance to us and who knows how many others in our community. There is no logical or legal basis for such intolerance of a three-minute statement irrespective of whether the mayor dislikes the speaker or the subject. I remind each and every council member of the decision in Vergara v. City of Waukegan, where Judge Shado pointed out that every council member who failed to object to just such action by the mayor ratified such action and made the city liable under forty-two U.S. Code, Section nineteen eighty-three. Per Section nineteen eighty-eight, such liability also includes attorney fees. My attorney has repeatedly put you on notice, but you have ignored that notice individually and collectively. Save the city liability and save the Kendall trees. Save the trees at Kendall.
Thank you.
BK Rao, twenty-two forty-six Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. Why are this council and this mayor so fearful of my constitutionally exercised right of free speech that they would deny me the meager three minutes of free expression on issues that can be remedied, modified, corrected, or completely reversed? Why do they wish to silence me when on June nineteenth, the applicants represented expressed the belief that the application must proceed through all applicable city commissions and committees before final approval by this council? Why does this council fail to object to violations of my right of free speech under the First Amendment when this mayor cuts off my microphone? Why does this council choose to ratify an ongoing pattern of denial of my First Amendment rights? Why do you not realize the exercise of my free speech is no less an expression of my religious faith? Can you not see that free speech under the First Amendment is a guarantee of religious freedom? Why aren't you all ashamed of violations of my rights, protected as they are under forty-two U.S. Code, nineteen eighty-three? Can you not see the whirlwind coming? Save the Kendall trees. Save all trees. I shall return.
Thank you.
I'm Bonnie Wilson, Evanston Township Assessor, and this is a message for all the taxpayers in Evanston. As you all know, everybody received their tax bills recently, and they are due on August the 1st. And many seniors have received incorrect exemptions on their current tax bill. I just want people to be aware of that, especially the seniors. The county assessor was made aware of this issue last week, thanks to my deputy assessor, Nick Pavaleti, who pointed this out to them. They just started to issue corrected bills to affected seniors. I, myself, just learned today that my bill was incorrect. The county assessor today issued my correction without me even requesting it, and anyone who has an incorrect bill may soon receive a certificate of error with the corrected amount due. But I want everyone who feels that their tax bills were incorrect to please call our office, and I will give you that number shortly. The 2010 delinquent taxes will be sold starting on August 3rd, 2012. And information on your 2012 appeals to the Cook County Board of Review will be available, we think, around August the 6th. That's what I was told, sometime in the beginning of August, but you need to call our office to verify that date. Again, my office is located at 846 Dodge, at the corner of Dodge and Main. Our phone number is 847-332-2465, and I would encourage anyone who feels that they were, especially seniors who were incorrectly, their taxes were incorrectly done, to call our office and make an appointment. It's better to make an appointment than to walk in. I also have with me a present, a statement by the Ali El Saffar, the president of the Cook County Township Assessors Association, regarding the property values. Are they going down? Are they going up? I'm not going to read this whole statement, but I will have it at the desk when people walk out. Also, I want to encourage all the Alderman, Alderman Homes and Braithwaite, we would be happy to come to your meetings this month, and anybody else that's having meetings this month, we'd be happy to attend their meetings and talk to them about, talk to your constituents about the tax bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Carolyn DeLucci, the executive director of downtown Evanston, and I just wanted to come and give you one of our flyers for the two new events that are happening in downtown Evanston. As you know, last year we did the arts district study, as it continues into this year in partnership with the city and the NEA grant. But this year, we're changing up sidewalk sales a little bit, and we're adding an art walk component. And so I just want to put a mention in there about this, and also a call out to local Evanston artists. If they're interested, they should contact our office and fill out the form to participate. But it'll be the weekend of July 27th, 28th, and 29th in downtown Evanston, and again, something new. Also, on the back, in partnership, as you know, we try to partner with different organizations, and we are partnering with the Technology Innovation Center for the first Evanston Mini Maker Fair, which will take place on August 4th and 5th in downtown Evanston, behind the Hilton Garden Inn there. So more to come, and I just wanted to say thank you for your support and let you know of these two new things happening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carolyn.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman, in.
Carolyn, could you explain a little bit more about what a mini maker fair is?
Sure. And we are not the sponsor of this event, the Technology Innovation Center in downtown Evanston is. What it is, basically, I would say, it's, if you're familiar with Make Magazine, it's very much a science and technology fair. And actually, both events, I'm really happy to say that we are working closely with Evanston Township High School and the schools in town to get our youth more involved in both of these events. As far as arts and science and technology, we have an intern in our office that is doing an awesome job kind of linking us to local high school students to participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before the consent agenda, Alderman Rainey, I forgot one thing, which is to thank all the volunteers at the Fourth of July Association, who did a wonderful job on the Fourth in spite of the weather. So, thanks to all of them. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda is as follows. We ask your approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 25, 2012. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening and asked your approval for the city payroll through June 17 in the amount of $2,634,247.73. The city of Evanston bills through February, through, for, through July 10, 2012, in the amount of $2,880,302.09. Our credit card activity through May 31st this year is at the amount of $115,227.10. The committee asks your approval of the sole source purchase of 103 gallons of ArboTech fungicide at $395.50 per gallon for a total purchase amount of $40,736.50 from Rainbow Tree Scientific Advancements. This is for the treatment of Dutch elm disease. The committee also asks your approval of, for the Lorraine Morton Civic Center ADA East Entry Project, oh, this is off the consent agenda, and will be addressed by the committee chair, I beg your pardon. Next is approval of a contract award for Church Street Improvement Project to landmark contractors in the amount of $2,155,814.96. The amount will be divided from, with, by the Washington National Tiff in the amount of $1,408,873.51, and the capital improvement plan in the amount of $746,941.45. Next, approval is requested to authorize the manager to execute a contract for the 2012 alley paving project to Acura Inc. in the amount of $595,812.50. Funding is through the Special Assessment Fund in the amount of $417,023, and CDBG funds in the amount of $175,789.50. We ask your approval to purchase four replacement vehicles for various departments in the amount of $419,855. Those vehicles are a Ford Escape, $20,673, an ambulance, $226,858, a wood chipper for $51,499, and a Zamboni for $120,825. Next, we ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute a change order, number three, with no increase in costs for a time extension of 61 calendar days to the agreement with Broadway Electric for the 5KV motor control center replacement at the water utility plant. The committee asks your approval for Evanston Roadmap for the Arts funding request and co-sponsorship-
You take that off, do you?
Beg your pardon?
Can you take that off?
Take that off. A5 will be addressed by the committee chair. Next is the 2011 audited annual financial report. Our staff requests that the council approve the audit, that the audit be accepted and placed on file. Next, the local liquor commissioner requests that we move for introduction, Ordinance 77012, which amends Section 356(c) of the Evanston City Code to increase the number of Class C liquor licenses from 30 to 31 for issuance to Found Investments LLC, doing business as Found Restaurant at 1631 Chicago Avenue. As I said, it's for introduction. We ask your approval for Ordinance 63012, authorizing the city manager to negotiate the sale of a city-owned vacant lot located at 1131 Sherman Avenue in Evanston to Mark Hammergren. Next, we ask your approval to adopt Ordinance 64012, which directs the city manager to execute a real estate contract for the sale of that property at 1131 Sherman Avenue to Mark Hammergren. Item A10 is Ordinance 67012, and that recommends approval of proposed Ordinance 67012 for the FY 2012 bond issuance totaling $16.22 million. The ordinance will be completed and signed after the bond sale date, which is tentatively scheduled for July 10, 2012. This is for action. Under Planning and Development, Alderman Wilson, should I keep this off so that you can speak to it?
I think that the family members of party-
Okay. This is a very special resolution, by the way. The Citizens Advisory Committee and, of public place names, and the Planning and Development Committee recommends approval to honor Charlene Garfield by the honorary designation of a portion of Eleanor Place between Wesley Avenue and Ashland Avenue, and the placement of a Charlene Garfield Way honorary street sign. Next, approval to grant connections for the homeless. The Homeless Management Information Systems money in the amount of $11,000. Funding will be provided by the Affordable Housing Fund, and the account is listed there. Next, Resolution 46R12. We recommend adoption of this resolution that will enable the city to receive an approved $100,000 grant from the Regional Transportation Authority, the RTA, for a transit-oriented development plan at Main and Chicago. The city council is being asked also to authorize the use of $25,000 in economic development funds as the local match, which is required. The committee, the Plan Commission recommends approval of Ordinance 38012. Oh, we need to take this off the consent agenda, item P4. Next, under Human Services. The Township of Evanston Supervisor recommends that the city council approve the Township of Evanston bills, payrolls, and medical payments for the month of May 2012 in the amount of $147,612.17. I beg your pardon? No, we didn't change the amount. Under the Rules Committee, the Rules Committee and staff recommend city council approval of Ordinance 66012, amending the City Code Title II, Chapter 14, relating to the Utilities Commission. This is for action and has to do with the responsibilities of that commission. For appointments, the mayor recommends appointments to the Housing Commission, Alita Graves, the Housing and Community Development Act Committee, Jessica-
Madam Mayor? I'm not able to help you, Alderman Rainey.
Blahogianis.
Perfect.
We know who Jessica is. Library Board, Tori Foreman. Utilities Commission, Jonathan Nusma. And for reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Board, William Logan. With that, Madam Mayor and council, I move the consent agenda.
Second. Consent agenda has been moved and seconded, seeing no evidence that anyone wants further discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero. The consent agenda passes. Alderman Burris, Administration and Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A3.2, the committee asks your approval of contract award to G.A. Johnson &amp; Son for the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center ADA East Entry Project, bid number 12-134. I move approval.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, this is probably a little controversial, my objecting to this, but it's my belief that by spending way over $100,000 to make a front door at City Hall accessible could be much better spent on making the rear door, the supposedly accessible door, more accessible and to clean it up, and maybe do something in the front as well. But I, I just did not find that we had, we were really clear on what the requirement was for making that front door accessible. And nobody knows how many people have inquired about making, making entrance through the door. And this is not the grand entrance in the front. This is the side entrance on the east side of the building. Just felt it was a waste of money, given the grand scale of the project that's being proposed.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to that issue? All right. Alderman Wilson?
I'm not on that microphone. Okay, I'm not on that committee, so I wasn't part of that earlier discussion, but I guess maybe I would be interested in seeing more of a roadmap for what the accessibility options are and should be, to make sure that we're making the right choice as far as the appropriate access to the building. I, I took it for granted, but you having raised this point, I can see that perhaps that might not be the best way in. I just don't know. So maybe a bit more information would be helpful if we could, is there any urgency in getting this done before the next meeting? Maybe if we get some information along those lines before the next meeting, we could have a better informed decision.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, perhaps I can just repeat what Parks Recreation Committee Services staff mentioned at the, at the committee meeting. We currently have one entrance that's accessible, and while ADA standards do not predicate the specific number, we feel that having only one entrance to this building is, given its size and the number of people who come to visit, was not acceptable. So, when looking at the best way to make a entrance accessible on the Ridge Avenue side, this was the door that was done. We would certainly be happy, Madam Mayor, Chairman Burris, to hold this, if you'd like, but I'm afraid that we probably won't have much of a more detailed explanation than that for you.
Alderman Holmes?
I was gonna pretty much say what the city manager said, except that I think Stephanie said that she'd need to do some research to find out what the actual requirements are in terms of, is a requirement to have a handicap-accessible entrance, but she wasn't sure exactly how many, and that was gonna be a part of what she was gonna get back to us, all I thought.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
My question was also, is there any urgency? And we need more information. It, it just seems like there's a, the better way to do this, to make the building more accessible than creating this separate entrance that, again, people don't, they can't park in the front, you can't, there's no handicap parking in the front. Very few people use the front entrance, so if you're dropping anyone off or you're parking in a handicaps, but you're definitely coming into the back of the building. So, I, I'm just not sure why we're doing this when we could make it even more, two entrances in the back that were handicapped accessible. So, more information would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I actually think that we should make the rear entrance much more accessible by virtue of a winding driveway for drop-off of people. I have watched several of our regular visitors to this building come in vans. It is very, very difficult getting a person from one of our handicap parking spaces in the parking lot. There's an incline. Up there, out of the car, into the chair, up the, up the incline and into the building. It's, it's not easy. I'm just trying to visualize that happening in the front. It's, it just seems to me to be a waste. If we want to do something to make the front accessible, I don't think it would take $100-plus thousand dollars to do so, but we could really do something fabulous in the rear with that kind of money.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to let you know, we sent this out of committee, approved it out of committee, but I think I'm gonna vote no on this because more information would be helpful, and I'm sure Steph put a lot of time into this already, and I'd love to know the reasoning on why this entrance and why so much.
And Madam Mayor, if it pleases the council, we can withdraw it from the agenda and come back at a future meeting with additional information.
That would be excellent. That would be excellent, City Manager. Does that work for everyone? All right. Alderman Burris?
A5, the committee asks your approval of Evanston Roadmap for the Arts, funding request and cosponsorship. Evanston Community Foundation. I move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson?
And I asked actually to have this removed from the consent agenda, not because I have an objection to it per se, but I did hear from a member of the Public Art Committee late in the day today that drew my attention to some potential reservations, at least as far as the articulated goals or the lack of the articulated goals. So while we're on the more information path, maybe perhaps we could get, I guess, a little bit more, not necessarily information, but conversation between the Public Art Committee, the Arts Council, and those who are going to be engaged in this process. It wasn't really, how I put it, I'm not so comfortable, my understanding is the $25,000 is for the consultant. Is that correct?
The lion's share of it is, yes.
Right. And I'm not real comfortable with, I guess, the role of the consultant and the goals of the group. So I think if we could engage the input of the other committees as well, that would give me a greater comfort level in making that kind of an allocation.
And Alderman, members of the council, as I think you know, the Arts Council has been involved along with the Community Foundation. We've been trying to take baby steps with this. We made a presentation to the council in May, which I think was generally well-received. This is the next step. This is meant to be a process that will last probably the next eight or nine months. So with this approval tonight will allow us to move forward with that. Really in conversations with Mayor Tisdale over the last several months was really the idea that this would be as big a tent as possible. So we've tried to keep the organizing group as small as possible, so as we move forward with this, we have the most people as possible involved. So I think certainly we can have the public art folks involved. We intend to have all the arts groups in Evanston involved. Nothing has started yet. It's just coming here this evening. If there was not the resources to do it, then there was no project.
I guess another way to put it is, I don't see a reason why we need to pay somebody $25,000 to organize our people.
And again, Alderman, this is something that, over the last several months, we've looked at, and given the scope of the responsibilities over a nine-month period, we feel comfortable. There'll be staff involvement, there'll be involvement from a committee of the Evanston Community Foundation, there'll also be involvement with the Arts Council. So this is a major effort. We anticipate this involving hundreds of Evanston residents. This is extremely important to the city of Evanston. So as costs go over the time period, there's more than one person involved. There'll also be advertising money that comes out of this, at least in part. I think it's an excellent investment for our future.
All right, it's been moved and, all right, Alderman Burris?
Is there a reason that we can't hold for more information? Is there a timeliness issue on this?
I think I've provided all, there is no additional information. Again, I think the council made it very clear when we talked about this in May, that you wanted to involve as many people as possible. So rather than presuppose more of the details, we're here with the outline of how we would move forward with the intention of involving as many Evanston residents as possible. So they really certainly can involve the Public Art Committee. We've already involved the Arts Council. Again, this is meant to be a major community initiative, and the sooner we understand that there's resources available, the sooner we can start involving all those people in the planning and execution of it.
Well, if members of the Public Art Committee want to be involved, which is terrific, they should want to be involved. Is there any problem with amending the ordinance to include them?
Well, the fundamental problem I have with it is, I don't know what the consultant's going to do. The information in the packet is very sparse in that regard. So the only thing I saw in there, it basically said it's to create a vision for the arts in Evanston, and that's pretty nebulous, and I guess I'm just looking for, what is this consultant literally going to do? You mentioned some things. They're going to be advertising, they're going to be doing this, that, and the other thing. So maybe those are all the things that they're going to be doing, but I don't see that. Maybe I missed it in the materials, but I don't think it was in the materials.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would point you to page 118 of the council packet. And again, this was covered, Ms. Kemp from the Community Foundation made a presentation earlier this evening. First, to conduct research and benchmarking to identify like-minded efforts in other communities from which Evanston can learn. Connect with the NEA consultants that are working on the downtown project that we're doing. Again, as was mentioned in the presentation in May, we have so many things moving at a speed here. How can we bring them all together? And the NEA project is a part of that. The consultant would design an instrument for a series of 10 to 15 key stakeholder interviews. They would identify key individuals for those interviews, conduct those interviews with an eye toward maximizing participation in fall activities. They would put together logistics and preparation for the fall implementation, develop invitation lists for listening sessions, set locations, draft invitations, establish a broader work group of committed stakeholders to champion the process. Then with the process in the fall and winter, move forward with designing the focus group listening sessions. Those would include artists, arts organizations, audience, educators, the university, and arts businesses, the new creative class and general businesses. There would be separate sessions held. The consultants would facilitate each of those separate sessions. They would be advertised. There would also be an internet component to that. From there, then the five listening sessions would be asking specific questions. Then that information would be synthesized and a presentation prepared to the findings of community members. I wish I could say this was a unique project to Evanston. This mirrors very closely to what the city of Chicago has been in the midst of, actually the consultant that's being hired is part of the team that's working on the Chicago Cultural Arts Plan. So if there's any additional detail, certainly the steering committee that has been formed made up of the Community Foundation, the Arts Council, city staff, and Community Foundation staff can be involved if there's additional issues that you'd like involved. Certainly, I've been meeting with all of the arts organizations in Evanston pretty regularly, meeting with them again on Thursday. They've been briefed, and they're very enthusiastic about that, and that's about 15 separate arts organizations. So they're involved and will be part of all of this. Again, so this is really the next step of a process that started back in January, February, moving forward with this. So all told, this will be a 12-month process to really gauge the feelings of our residents about the arts. And then, most importantly, with limited resources, what can we do to move forward? What can we do in the downtown? We'll have had studies done on the Varsity Theater, studies done on downtown arts, but what can we do to actually make that move forward? What can we do to help the individual artists, the individual organizations that are here? What can we do to make sure, as Alderman Holmes said, we're not just worried about arts from north to south, but also from east to west? How can we do all of those things? Again, I think this is a good investment. We'll continue to look for additional funder, community partners, as we move forward. But moving forward, the arts in Evanston is very critical.
Seeing no more lights, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Evanston Roadmap for the Arts, funding request and cosponsorship with the Evanston Community Foundation. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero. The motion passes. Alderman Burris, does that complete your report?
Yes.
Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance 38-0-12, amending various portions of the City Code relating to bed and breakfast establishments. This ordinance was held in committee on April 23, 2012, May 14, 2012, and at the June 18, 2012 council meeting, this ordinance was held for action until today, July 9. I move approval.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Tendem asked me to please hold this because he is in Russia and not available to speak tonight, and so I promised to bring that to all of you. I have two opinions from our council on ways that that can legally be done, should you choose to do it. At the request of two Aldermen, any matter except a special order of business may be held over for consideration until the next regular meeting of the council. Any matter so held over may not be held over a second consecutive time by this procedure. An Alderman may ask either the city manager or the Alderman requesting the holdover to explain the impact of the holdover at the time the holdover is requested. If a request to hold the matter over is contested by a motion to overrule the request duly made and seconded, the motion to overrule will be sustained if at least two-thirds of the Aldermen present vote in favor of the motion. A motion to overrule is debatable, or a motion to postpone to definite time, a debatable motion, which requires a simple majority. I hope I made it clearer and not murkier. Alderman Wynn?
Well, Madam Mayor, I will not be here, as I have stated several times, on the July 23 meeting. At this point, I'm concerned that this has been, we have recognized that when other Aldermen have made requests far in advance to hold this, and I am concerned that this is going to be kicked again down to August 9, and I'm not sure whether we'll have a full council that night. I only heard about Alderman Tendem's request by email just in the last few days. I was without cell coverage and email coverage for several days.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I think, Alderman Wynn, can we maybe ask everyone at council, will everyone be here at the August meeting?
It's August 13.
August 13. Is anybody planned to be gone? I don't know if this is appropriate to do or not. Sorry for breaking rules.
I think it's perfectly appropriate.
Okay. No one is, and I know Mark said he would be here the rest, or Alderman Tendem would be here the rest of the, so we could, to the August meeting?
It's a double holdover, though.
It's, how do we do that? I think that's the question, whether that's, because...
Put a date, sir.
Mr. Farrar?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, grant for our Corporation Council, I would suggest that there be a motion to postpone to a definite time, August 13. That's probably a lot cleaner in terms of Roberts' rules and parliamentary procedure.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey? And council, make it a special order of business so that it cannot be held again.
Well, that wouldn't necessarily, if it's going to be done pursuant to an Aldermanic hold under Council Rule 18.12, then yes, the special order of business proviso would be implicated. So it's really a question of where the council's at in terms of seeking to have a final disposition made on August 13. I respectfully suggest that a motion to postpone to a definite time, that being August 13, is the cleaner, sounder parliamentary way to go.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My understanding was that this was a request of an agent for, Colonel Pritzker had made this request and had sought out an Alderman to ask for this matter to be held, and I find that just extraordinary, and especially when there are people here from the public who have expressed interest in the months and months and months that this has been before us at council. I'm willing to wait until August, but I think this is bad form for the council.
Thank you. All right, does someone want to make a motion? Alderman Burris?
I motion, I move to hold, postpone, sorry, ordinance 38-0-12, amending various portions of the City Code relating to bed and breakfast establishments until the City Council meeting on August 13, 2012.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Burris?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Yes.
Alderman Wynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Holmes?
Yes.
Seven to one.
Seven to one. The motion passes. It will be held until, what was it, August 13?
August 13.
So that the public knows when it will be on the agenda next. We are now at Call of the Wards. Alderman Grover?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
To follow up on your comments, the parade was amazing, and some of the entries were unbelievable, and I don't know how people survived in their outfits, and also the...
I saw you marching the whole way.
But I didn't have on a bird costume, you know. And also the volunteers, they were there way longer than anybody participating in the parade, so it was an amazing event. I really appreciated it.
It was. Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I too want to say the Fourth of July Parade was a lot of fun, even though it was very, very, very hot, and we had a lot of water out there. I also want to do a special thank you to Cheryl and Rob Munro from the Ninth Ward who helped organize the Ninth Ward contingency, as well as Mary Press and Dan Coyne for coming out, and members of my family as well. It was a great turnout and just a lot of fun, also to march with several of my fellow Aldermen. The other, we have a Ninth Ward meeting coming up on July 18 at Grace Lutheran Church. It will begin at 7:00 p.m., and actually hoping that Bonnie Wilson will be there as well, so please come out. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk? Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the residents of the Second Ward, this Thursday at 7:00 p.m., we'll have our monthly ward meeting at District 65 Building. On the agenda, we will do an update on the Evanston Plaza Tiff. We will answer questions regarding your tax bill. We'll have the staff from the township, and then you'll have an opportunity to meet the owners of Felony Frank's, a new business that was invented by the mayor, to come to Evanston. So you'll have an opportunity to meet the owners and ask questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
I hope somebody asks about the name. No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Again, echoing the sentiments on the parade, and special thanks to my youngest son, Owen, for the third time riding his bicycle alongside me in the parade. Makes it a lot more fun. Also, thanks to YMCA for putting on a great event for the kids and 14 and under the youth triathlon over the weekend. Lot of fun, great event for those who were able to participate in that. And I want to thank you all, my council members, fellow council members, for supporting the street naming for Charlene Garfield. I presume you've seen the materials in the packet. Ms. Garfield has been a wonderful neighbor and community member, and continues to, she's lived on Eleanor Place for over 40 years, and has made a great impact on many of our fellow community members, so appreciate your support in that regard.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This next Thursday, July 19, is a regular meeting of the Fifth Ward. We'll be at Fleetwood at 7 o'clock, as always, and we too expect the township folk to be there with the tax information. Also, tomorrow night, everyone, if you're not doing anything, come over to Twiggs Park. We're having our first concert this year at 7:30. Oh my, the loneliest funk, and it's a blues and hip-hop group, so get your chairs and your blankets and come on out and enjoy some good music. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we do not have an executive session. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Come on, folks, that was an easy motion.
That was tense.